A regularly scheduled council committee of the whole. I will call this meeting to order today's date is Tuesday, March the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And all members of the council are present. We have our staff present as well. We have eight items on the agenda this morning. So we'll start with item number one and we'll turn the committee of the whole agenda over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennett. And good morning, everyone. Britt?
Morning. First item on the agenda is Pat Wertz from Carl Sanderson regarding an update on the construction of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Pat, green light is go.
All right.
Morning, Pat.
Good morning, everyone. How are you all doing? Just kind of a quick update to go through of the closeout commissioning. There's two items up in the commissioning log. Excuse me, I got a frog in my throat. Biggest one, the sound attenuator, which is still on back order, which hopefully, which that's at Arena A, which in all reality, there's not much, nobody's really noticed an issue with that right now. I'll just, sorry, lessen the noise from the air handler into the ductwork. Once that gets installed, it'll be a little less. But I haven't got a date on when that's going to be in yet. And then the other one's just some minor trim work for the commissioning log. That's your mechanical system. And then the other was just a punch list items. The big one is the carpet in the ballrooms, which, once that color gets selected, that's roughly eight to 10 weeks before that'll get ordered and then replaced. And then some of the trim on the Huff Court doors is still backordered as well. We have not got a date on that. Then the bleachers on the backs of that, those are end of April. Those matching ones are already at the Peta Wood. I think it's those six pieces that were missed. So then, that's where it goes, end of April on that. And then as far as fixing Arena B, those dashboard, that's scheduled for March seventeenth. Because I don't know, everybody knows that issue of the depth between the net or the goal and the backboard is like 11 foot six, supposed to be 12 foot or whatever it was. That was the major issues, I guess. So overall, it's a couple of minor things to be done. And then once all the snow is gone, we'll go do an exterior punchless walkie with everything again to make sure all the concrete and landscape held up over the winter to address any issues. So that's kind of my brief update.
Questions? All right, thank you. Councilor Beyondich.
Thank you. The dashboard boards, is that just a matter of the paint not being in the right spot?
No, it was the dashboard boards, they were, basically got flipped around. So it's like, it's gonna take them three hours to fix it.
Okay.
So the biggest issue was taking the ASO to go through and then they'll switch the boards around and then everything will be legal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And Pat, I don't see, I don't see any other lights on right now. Some of the questions that I have received, of course, and this has nothing to do with Carl Sanderson, but for the general public, we are addressing and taking a look at what can be done to make adjustments to the seating throughout the arena. Apparently, it's been reported by a number, a lot of people about the comfortability of that and how, you know, the seating and the narrow part of the seating and how it really isn't accommodating the people for the long term watching games. So I know that we're working on that outside of the purview of what your responsibilities are as a construction manager at risk. But the other thing is, I think, part of your punch list items is to go through in the spring when you're looking at the concrete. I think the interior part of it too, and I understand this is northern Minnesota, and concrete does crack. But I think looking at some of the other facilities throughout the northern part of the state, that those kind of cracks do not appear in their purview. So I'm sure you'll be taking a look at what can be done to repair those things. And I bring that up because that's been a bone of contention for a lot of people who've called me, and I'm sure maybe some of the other councils got those as well. So we'll be looking at that when spring comes and moving forward for that. So does any other council have any questions, concerns, or questions for Mr. Wertz as we move forward with springtime coming, with the rest of the part of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center to be inspected and all the punch list items to be reviewed? Seeing none? Thank you very much, Pat, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Take care.
You too. Thanks.
The next item on the agenda, item number two, is federal allocation for the 2021 infrastructure project. And Matt Reed is here with some very exciting news. Let you be the announcer, Matt.
Yes, thank you. Matt, good morning.
Morning. Yeah, I guess I get to be the one that gets to announce the good news. Although there's others here, I think that probably deserve to do that more than me, but I'll announce it. So we were notified that, so back in, let's see, when was that? 2020? 2021? 2021, a year ago. We had a notification come out from Staubers Office requesting earmarks for some money for whatever shovel-ready projects we might have. And so we submitted for the street and infrastructure project. And at that time, the project hadn't been bid yet, so we were able to apply for that money. And the money never came through last year, unfortunately. But now fortunately, this year, it came through. And so it sounds like the city's going to get, I don't know that it's 100% for sure, but it's, Britt's shaking her head, so I'm.
Million dollars.
Three million dollars towards the street infrastructure project. Federal allocation. So one of the things we're gonna have to work through now is that was originally allocated for the first phase of the project, which is already under construction. It's already been bid, all of those things. So that money can't necessarily be applied towards that. But we think we can maybe work with them to get it applied towards Phase Two. It's all part of the same project, just a different phase of the project. So it's just a matter of timing on when the application went in versus when they actually were able to turn it around on the political side of things. And it's a year later than we were expecting it, but we'll take it. So hopefully, we can work through that here in the next few weeks and get that hammered out. And hopefully, we can secure and solidify that $3 million towards Phase Two. So it's good news.
Very exciting. Thank you very much, Matt. I did have a conversation with John Alarento, or Jack Alarento, the representative for Congress and Staubers Office. And there was a concern with respect to that, and he says, well, does this foresee any issues about working us through this, so we can work that into our project? Because it's a continuation of a street and project moving forward, so, and I think they understand that. So, thank you. Councilor Beyondich.
Thank you. And thank you, I'm glad that we're getting that money for the street project, as my daughter was just here and shook her head and said, what is going on? Anyway, just to veer off, when we are asking for, is it for 2022, 2023? The Public Safety Building is on the top of the list for an ask.
For '23.
For '23. Okay. And this is from 20?
Actually, from '21.
This was a 21?
But it carried over to this, so it's 22 technically.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, and that's not unusual for it to lag a little bit longer, maybe into the next cycle of funding for the feds. It's not unusual. So what we're asking for 2023 may not come until the following year, but because it takes a while to hammer that stuff out in a bipartisan way. But yeah, we're looking forward to that as well. So thank you, Councilor Beyondich. Anybody else on the good news for $3 million? Councilor Biraboo?
Mayor, Matt and Britt, thank you, since I'm chairman of the Street Alley and worked along with these two, but they did the bulk of the work to get this. So I really appreciate what you've done, because I don't anticipate costs are gonna be down in this next two years. This project goes until when 25?
Five.
Yeah, so we've got time to get this all feathered out, but it's gonna be a big help with our street projects that we're looking at. Because we're looking at just, much as we can, continuing on from what we've done for this first set of projects. So we'll put together some more afterwards, see if we can find the money.
And once again, I just, you know, I know all our, our entire congressional delegation to the state of Minnesota helped in, you know, maybe moving this forward and voting for it. But, you know, the shout out goes to Congress and Staubers Office, because they, their representatives have kept us apprised every step of the way about where we're at, where we're going, how we're gonna go about that. So, you know, that's, they did the old man's work for us in that regard and led the way to a successful conclusion. So thank, kudos to all our Congress, congressional delegation that voted for it. So thanks very much, Matt. Thank you, Britt. Thanks, everybody, for all your hard work on this. Any other questions, comments, or concerns about that? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Item number three is the request for the proposed library closure dates. We do have Jody Grabanowski here from the library.
Jody, Library Director, please come forward. Welcome to the Council Committee Home Meeting. I know you come to every single one of them, but this is a library issue, so welcome. And what do you got for us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are getting ready for summer reading. I know it's only March, but we're trying to get all of our planning done. I'm requesting two days off, one in May, to close at 1:00, so that staff can meet. We are planning all outdoor events again, and if you've been in the library, you know we don't really have any place to stage stuff. So we are gonna get the auditorium ready to go. And then we'll have all of our staff by then, we will have our library aides, so all of us can meet, get on the same page, who's gonna do what, where, all that fun stuff. So that's on May 20th. And then after, on August 17th, we want to close for a day for a couple of different reasons. For one, to put everything back that we've been using all summer, and to see what worked, what didn't work, what do we want to do for '23, and start planning for winter, fall of '22 to '23.
Fantastic. Did you want to also, could we also address item five on the agenda too? Let's do item five as well, Jody, so you don't have to come back up again.
See, it's more summer reading. So Stephanie has planned, our big truck day was a huge success last year. We had almost 300 people. So we're gonna request to close the street again. We're gonna do trucks again, but this year, community trucks. As far as I know, Stephanie has talked, I think so far, we have a mail truck, we have a school bus, we're gonna work with Jim from, and see if we can get a bigger, a big city truck. So we're just trying to get, it's gonna be community truck themed, so we would like to request to also close the street and reach out to city employees to come and join us on this very fun day in July this year. I think July 12th. So yes, July 12th.
Very good, thank you. So you're looking for approval for both those closures? So looking for council action? First, we'll go to Councilor Beyondich, and over to Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. I would make the motion for both those items, and thank you for doing such a great job.
Okay, motion by Councilor Beyondich to approve the closure dates requested by Library Director Jody Grabanowski. Is there support, or support by Councilor Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jody, very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your meeting.
I will move to close the street for the truck day.
A move by Councilor Johnson to close the city street in order to accommodate Community Truck Day for the library on Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Councilor Biraboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody.
The next item on the agenda, back to item number four, memorandum of understanding with Friends of the Greenhouse for use of the greenhouse. And we do have Brian Silber here, if we need to ask him any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. You would like to come forward? And I know there's a letter of understanding that be discussed on the custodial services staff schedule, and it's from the Personnel Committee, and I was unable to attend due to a medical appointment. And so Councilor Paulson and Councilor Freely were the Personnel Committee members at this meeting. Brian, good morning.
The first thing is the memorandum of understanding with the Friends of the Greenhouse. This is something that we do every year with them, just for legality purposes of allowing them in the building. It is a most identical memorandum compared to previous years with just a few very, very minor changes, basically grammatical changes.
A move? Looking for a motion, Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, we, the Friends of the Greenhouse Board has reviewed this, and they are, it's acceptable to them, so I will move that we authorize the signing for the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, move by Councilor Johnson and supported by Councilor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And the next item is the proposed letter of understanding with ASME regarding custodial services staff schedules. And this comes from the Personnel Committee meeting that was held on March 14th, 2022. The minutes and such are on your desk.
Okay, thank you. And I would refer, as you look at this, that brought forward here to the Community Home Meeting, through the Personnel Committee that was held yesterday, and I would defer to Councilor Paulson or Councilor Freely, or both, any other information to disseminate to the rest of the elected body with respect to your recommendations moving forward. Councilor Freely?
Essentially, Mr. Silber took the time to propose various schedules that would be accommodating to the custodial staff at the MECC for the two positions that have been proposed. ASME agreed with the 10-hour shift. And we also discussed the wage scale that would be appropriate for the positions. And I had agreed to that with ASME.
Okay, thank you. And so this is amenable to the bargain unit as well, moving forward? Okay, thank you. So the recommendation from the Personnel Committee is to approve item number six on the agenda is the proposed letter of understanding with ASME regarding the custodial staff 10-hour schedule. Looking for a motion or any further discussion from the council with respect to item six on the agenda? Councilor Biraboo?
Just from looking at this, Brian, you're covering 10-hour shifts on weekends, too?
Right?
Looks like it from what I'm reading here.
Yes, this would provide the building seven-day-a-week coverage, 10 hours a day, seven days a week. The only day that the two positions would overlap would be on Wednesdays, which would give the custodial staff the opportunity on Wednesdays to do a lot of deep cleaning. During hockey season, that's a good time, because it's either the day after a high school game, or the day, typically the day before a high school game. Also midweek, so it would allow the building to get much cleaner in the middle of the week. But we will have seven-day-a-week coverage, which would greatly impact the cleanliness of the building every day of the week, year round.
Okay, is any of the shifts, it looks like there's a couple people in there, and are their shifts gonna overlap, or are they gonna be separate?
Just on Wednesdays, their shifts would overlap.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Councilor Biraboo. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And as we've discussed before, these positions will allow for utility staff to do the maintenance and the stuff that they're not currently have time to do, because they are doing a lot of the detailed cleaning, and we're still missing stuff. So this will allow for the utility staff to focus on keeping the building running and the maintenance, especially that ice stuff. And then, because we have 365 ice now, which is something we've never had, so that'll be a whole new learning curve for you all this summer. Good luck. So I will move that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the 10-hour shifts.
A move by Councilor Johnson to move the recommendation by the Personnel Committee to approve the letter of understanding with ASME regarding custodial services staff schedules. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Councilor Biraboo. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see on here, do we have to include the wage?
Not on this one. Not on this.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Just clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. So has been moved and supported, the 10-hour schedule. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
And then the second item was the vacant network IT specialist position transitioning to administrative assistant to an administration. And again, the minutes and the job description are on your desk.
Anything else from the Personnel Committee with respect to this recommendation moving forward to the Community Hall? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So we did have some discussion around this. This job was Chris's prior job, and I think you did a great job kind of tweaking and talking to Sheri and John Sullivan about what the needs of that department would be. And one thing that we kind of discussed was that this person would then kind of be the point person for VIDA and VEDA, because Wendy had taken some of that, more the, I guess, the financial aspect of that. But this person would be then kind of getting trained and versed in both of those EDAs, and that'll help John moving forward as well. So I felt really comfortable with the job description, and I think Councilor Freely did too. And it kind of made sense with where that, the direction of that whole department is going. So I'm completely comfortable moving forward with this.
Okay.
And the wage stayed the same.
Okay, thank you. And the wage stays the same. Thank you. So the job description, recommendation by personnel is to make the adjustments to the job description, which your wage scale to stay the same? Looking for council action, either through, from a member of the Personnel Committee or the elected body? Councilor Beyondich first, and then we'll go to Sheri Erickson, our Finance Director.
Thank you. I just, I just had a question. On this, because the person vacating this position did, did all that IT work on our computers, is that included in this? They won't be doing that? Who in City Hall will be doing that?
We do have Deb Janek has a very similar description. She's a network IT specialist also, so she can assist from the fire hall. And then we have Rogers Online and Pantheon Computers already under contract that we pay for to do those things.
So for Rogers Online, if we come across a problem with our computers or any of that, who would we contact? Is it Roger? Rogers Online?
Debbie. Debbie is the ASME network IT specialist.
So Chris will no longer be doing that position?
Chris has vacated this position.
And the position that we're, this is the job description, so that person will not have this knowledge?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sheri?
Just correction, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I thought the wage was going to change?
It was changed into what Chris's wages was.
Okay.
It's staying the same.
Do we have a motion yet? Ma'am? Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the recommendation for the vacant network IT specialist position transitioned from that, titled to administrative assistant? Recommendation to move forward from the Personnel Committee, which is, consists of Councilor Paulson and Councilor Freely? Looking for council action? Councilor Biraboo?
I'll recommend approval of this pending, so we can speak during the discussion time, because I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilor Biraboo to approve. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Johnson. Further discussion, Councilor Biraboo?
I need to ask a question of Mr. Sullivan. John, he uses position quite, quite a bit with all the blight and all this other stuff, correct?
Councilor Biraboo, good morning. Yeah, I use this position quite a bit to assist me with VEDA projects, and then the Public Safety Center acquisition area, the administration of that project going forward, numerous different administrative and clerical duties. That's a position I rely on quite a bit.
Okay. So is this going to short you in the interim until we get this person trained, unless we have somebody in-house that's trained for this position? Because I don't want you hanging out with everything going on.
Yes.
Well, I think Councilor Biraboo will rely on the previous staff to help with, through that transition period, like we do with all the other positions, till we get this new person on board.
I don't know of hardly anyone that knows that job, other than one we're losing, because anytime we have a question about one of those, we go to Chris. So that's gonna be interesting with his transition on this. And I don't want to take business that you're involved in right now, plus the planning and zoning that's coming up. So we gotta get somebody that's got experience in this area. I don't care if it's in-house, or we go out of house for either of them at the same time. So just make sure you don't tell somebody you're fine. If you're not fine, tell us. All right?
Well, thank you. Yeah, big shoes to fill. Chris did a really good job at that position, so.
Okay.
We missed.
Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is number eight, closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D05 subdivision three, attorney-client privilege pending litigation.
Okay, and if it's amenable to the elected body and under recommendation from our city attorney, we have the representative from, from the parties that we're gonna be discussing, potentially in closed session, wants to make us, address the council publicly. Is that amenable? Please come forward with Mr. Eric Honkenen, who is the representative for the parties involved in this process. Welcome, Eric, to the city council. The green light is, make sure the mic is on, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Thank you. Begin by saying thank you for having me, being able to come here today and talk to you. I know that there's a difficult circumstance kind of going on with regard to my client who I represent, Northern Divide, Arn Eadry, and Mitch and Kelsey Kerfeld. Seems that, from what I understand, is that they were here on February 22nd in response to Mr. Lindsay providing them a notice to cure, because they were about seven months behind in rent. And then, so they came and there was an apology, and then there was a promise to pay. And then what they left understanding was that they would be able to have a new lease. They were like, if you give us 18 grand, we're gonna give you your lease. And then they performed. I think the problem with it is, is that everybody thought that they weren't. I think that that's the issue, is this, I mean, I'll tell you what I, I got a phone call from Brian, and I was like, well, this doesn't look good. And I talked to my clients, and I was like, well, you've gone through COVID. I was like, do you need, like, help? Like, is this, this is the time to ask, like, if you're behind and you can't monetarily afford it? They said, nope, we can do it. I let Mr. Lindsay know that they're good on it. And then Thursday came, and the Wasabi Tribune publishes that article, and that has been nothing short of a disaster for my clients. So you have to think, in the sense that they're working really hard, and everybody's coming in using their gift certificates, and they're not actually generating cash. Nonetheless, they still paid their rent. And they're here today to work out a solution to some of the problems. And one of them is, they are fine with doing an auto debit from their bank account on the first business day of the month, from the bank, and auto pay for $3,000 a month. So I think that that should resolve that issue of any kind of payment, if that's the only issue. And then if there's, it seems, up until last Friday, I think Mr. Lindsay and I were under the impression that there was only an issue with regard to the lease. And I believe that one of the counselors even texted my client, saying, this isn't about you, this is just about the lease. And so here we are with regard to the lease, but is that actually the case? So if we have my clients performing, and we have the assurance that nothing is wrong with anything else, other than just the payments, and we resolve that by contract, then there's no need to have any further request for proposals. I do have, like, and trust me, it's like, I come here because I know many of you personally, and so it's difficult in the sense, like, I spent my whole weekend, like, sitting there thinking, laying awake at night, thinking I'm gonna, like, potentially have to enter into, like, litigation with people that I consider friends, and I don't want to do into, like, litigation with people that I consider friends, and I don't want to do that. But I do believe that there is an issue from my client's standpoint with regard to right to first refusal under the current circumstances, with regard to, like, the request for proposal in the sense that the request for proposal that went out includes a statement that none of the information will be shared with another party. But the fact is, is that my client's right to first refusal is contractual in nature, and the contract is still pending, and it's still active right now. So they have that right to first refusal, on top of the fact that they've elected to attempt to extend their lease for three months, so, or three years, excuse me. So I come here, like, and my heart is, like, benevolent in the sense that I want to work something out today so that we can resolve this and that we can, again, keep a good relationship with the city. That's why also I would say, you haven't seen anything from my clients go up on social media, because I've told them, like, I want to maintain a good relationship with them. You need to do that. They are your landlord. We need to, like, work in a partnership. So it's intentional that they have muted their social media presence in terms of stating what they believe is the truth on their side, which might help their business. But again, that's for the purpose, and they're following my advice on that. I don't want to make things worse. I'm hoping that we can resolve this today, truly. And so we'll be available. And I would say just on one thing is that I really do believe that they are both, they are extraordinary asset to the city. And this is me personally talking. I don't know of a chef that's Luth or North that is as qualified and as daring and experimental and thoughtful as Mitch Kerfeld in what he, what he does as a chef, certainly. So I think he truly is an asset. With that, I would yield my time on the floor. And I do believe that my clients would like to say a couple words, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Honkenen. Hold that thought for a moment. So I'm going to go to the rest of the elected body first, and I'm going to ask for a recommendation from a legal counsel if it's something that discussion would, would further be prudent during a closed session. So I would ask that first before we go to the rest of the council. Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the, the closed session, essentially what the purpose of the closed session would be, would be for the council to receive attorney-client privilege information about the potential for litigation and the risks and potential positions in litigation. And so I believe that, that may have some value, and I guess I would defer, Mayor, to your honor and the council.
Okay, thank you. With really, with relationship to that recommendation on the vernacular scope of the potential consideration with respect to litigation, we continue to, can do publicly some comments or new requests and answers to the questions and in responses to the issues that were presented here by Mr. Honkenen. Counselor Johnson?
I will move to go into closed session.
Okay, Counselor Johnson moves, to move to closed session. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support?
All support, Mayor, just so we can have a little further discussion. It probably shouldn't be public.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Birabu, to move to closed session to discuss the remaining of the items on item eight under the agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We would ask everybody who's not involved in this issue to please leave the room, and we'll have a closed session discussion about that. And then, once that's complete, we will reopen the council, or the Community Home Meeting for a public comment and additional other items of concern. So thank you very much, everybody, and we'll be back momentarily, so. And should we bring in the Kerfels as well? No, okay, so, where is he? Where'd he go? Nobody. So we'll discuss this and then bring him back in. So, okay, so we are now in a closed session with respect to pursuant to the Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B, attorney-client privilege pending litigation with respect to the lease agreement and the operation of the golf course by the Northern Divide LLC or NorDivide Inc. So, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. And you do not need to report. The purpose?
Steve Rocklo's got it off on his side. Leave it on on that side. Steve Rocklo's got it off on his side.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. So the purpose for this is...